What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at three bet box from the small blind, so on the first part, we're gonna be playing a C bet, small on the flop, and then what we're, we wanna look at today is like the turn strategy. So first part, we see that small on the flop, on on the second part, we're gonna venture into the bigger bets. So for now, C bet small, then in calls, we play a turn every time.
Did, let me ask you something, did you actually go through the aggregate report and filter for flops that are mostly small bets, or you just random flops?
Do you see it here? We got all the distribution right here at the bottom, and then you're gonna see like, we are exploring all the yellow, and nope, the flops are all over the place.
Oh, no filters?
No filters for.
Uh, I would check here, I don't know if it's any good or not, yeah, I don't know what to do here.
It's a good showdown value.
Just fold, I would fold.
You wanna fold, huh?
Uh, DGO folds, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna call.
Did you call it? Easy field fold.
Well, it starts mixing fold, so it's not like a slam dunk.
No, it's not slam dunk, neat, that's true.
Basically indifferent here.
So not what turned on the river that makes you wanna call flop and fold river? The five changes nothing.
Just because on the flop, I know we need to continue like ace king. But I don't think they're barreling off often enough for me to worry about having to go with these kinda hands past one bet. Like people are gonna like do shenanigans on the flop with like spades and stuff like that.
The changes that they bet, they don't check.
So yeah, well, I ain't calling here.
And a five is of course trips, there's also.
Into the straight.
I don't know, seven four.
Check. Days, the seven is bad for us.
Okay, so we check here, and how do we play a hand like king queen a?
What's the bottom of our range, bet range, that's the only question.
The bottom of our three bet range is probably like queen ten a?
Yeah, then I think queen ten of the bet. And queen jack of maybe still check, I don't know, maybe mixing.
Uh, can we see our three bet range, I'm curious how many? I'm curious how many of these meddling cards connected we have in our range from the small blind?
Yeah, suited ones, we have some, yeah.
A little bit, right?
So this is the range we three bet with.
So they can't go crazy when we check, cause we have word coverage here, so I, we're not.
Yeah, no, not really, we don't have.
Super cat.
And then we, as we see here, uh, we check ninety-five percent of the time. Simple as that.
Yeah, but seven, eight, and that kinda stuff, you have proportionally less, I don't know.
We have a lot more marginal hands. Oh wait, so what am I looking at? We just have slivers of eight, seven, eight, six in range, right?
Yeah, we only have slivers of those, we don't have them full time, I mean. This is confusing a bit.
Can you do proportional? Or no, whatever it is.
Nah, this is better, it gives more, uh, how many in your range you have. The range height. So we have some eight, six, seven, six, and six, fives.
Playing about sixty-five combos total. Yeah, I mean, we're not happy, we're not gonna triple off like, um, eight, six here, right? Like we got a pair of sixes, so. You can't just barrel the marginal stuff, three barrels, all right, that's seven, that makes out a straight, so but. So nine, seven would be a better example, like you're not just gonna triple off nine, seven here.
Yeah, nine, the nine is blocking, of course, the, the best combos of fit, man, nine, eight.
There's not really a good turn for us.
No, of course not. Even an ace, not?
No.
We think an ace is probably still, uh, okay.
So these middlely connected boards, it looks like we have to really protect our checking range.
Okay.
Yeah, but it seems, uh, yeah, logical, eh, because on the six, five, four board, the button has the best range.
Alright.
Many calls at least.
And now, we're just gonna check it down.
I'm folding this like I folded ace king.
Yeah, if you call with ace king and sometimes fold, and you fold ace queen, I think we need. Okay, top pair, bad kicker, check call. The four is a brick, so we polarize, I think.
I'm happy to check, but I'm gonna bet from the top down.
Bet my better aces. Some diamonds and some queen ten, maybe?
Like have some bets on it because we don't have a diamond, but I'm checking.
So sure, checking is the easy answer, right? But if you bet again, like sixteen, is he calling with like a king eights? Is he calling with like a worse hand, like a pocket nine, pocket ten?
Oh no.
Pocket jack, pocket queen.
King could maybe call if, uh.
A change.
So if we bet this combo, we bet small if you're trying to get called by that stuff, it's probably a small barrel rather than a large barrel, we're check. I think it's probably like eight or check.
Like on the four turn.
It's a break.
On a barrel. Yeah.
Yeah, it's doing it sometime.
Thing is, look at the SPR, we can't check it down with top pair as, like SPR one point five, we have the nuts basically.
And all the, just three bet potter, so the ranges are more tight.
The solver is checking.
Yeah, it's checking.
But also betting big.
Alright, but you can't say we can't check here when the solver predominantly wants to check.
No, but I'm saying, look at the SPR. Do you usually check top pair at SPR one point five?
Well, I said I could either check or use the eight big blind size, which is actually higher even than the.
Better, you're even.
Point two.
Like in my mind, when SPR is like this, top pair becomes the stone cold nuts. Regardless of the kicker.
Is it not? It's a three bet potter, so there are more ace access in his face also, probably. Although not the best ones. Another break. He blocked a spade, that's not good.
Hmm, hmm, hmm. They say, they say, they say. A five on the turn, it's a fair board, it's not great.
And. It's also not good, so.
I guess another spot, we bet eight or check.
Uh, thing is, uh, we get better aces to fold, right, if we bet again?
Um, the, maybe ace, nine, ace, ten, ace, jack, maybe get some.
Yeah, no, you're right, I guess there's not that many better aces, we just check.
Still betting some, that's betting.
Mostly betting.
Interesting.
At fifty, fifty almost.
If we bet sixteen, I'm pretty sure.
Very polarized, yeah, of course, it's the turn.
He's mixing folds with some ace jacks without the spade. Oh, he's folding with this spade.
Because he wants us to have the spade.
Ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, nine. We ain't getting them off any pairs yet. Fours are, uh, fours are set, fives are.
Uh, trees are folding.
No, but we target better aces hearts.
Six, five, folding.
Yeah, we get some fives to fold, some trees, some weak pairs, and some aces.
So some bears fold. Some better hands fold, sorry.
How's it breaking down the strategy here?
A lot of aces, uh, the best ace eyes are checking motion. The showdown. So the bets come from the king.
Ace, eight, seven.
Yeah, it's the bottom of your range, actually, I mean, almost.
Is this a breakdown what each hand in their range is going to do?
Yeah.
On the turn, okay.
So this is roughly the range, because we messed a little bit with the, the hates. But it gives us an idea like, uh, here, like if you have a jack ten, you missed, you don't have anything, I would think you wanna barrel here, because you get like better, better hands than yours to fold, and a whole bunch of, of stuff. Then sometimes, when you have a hand like jack ten, you wanna play it like you play pocket tens. But here, it's checking pure, the gray is checked. Then you, you get the color, color code here.
Is that because your block is, uh, king, jack, king, ten floats?
Yeah, but king.
And I've sold on the turn, I mean, against the bet.
King ten's betting now.
Yeah, I wonder then why jack ten is, uh, it's also depending on what he does. So having a jack and a ten is bad.
Because we block the bottom of his continues.
Yeah. Remember I, I, I thought, ten, it's not that good, king, yeah. Could say, say the same for kingdom, but maybe that's a spade one that says still betting or something like that.
Now, we have ace eight, so why would ace eight bet big on that turn? I don't get it.
Because look at this, when we have a hand like ace eight, okay? If we bet big on this turn, this guy, our opponent, has hands like ace nine, ace ten, ace jack, that he, he missed here, he doesn't have anything to go with it. So we take a, a hand like ace eight, and we get him off like an ace jack sometimes, an ace ten sometimes, an ace nine sometimes. But then we get a better hand to fold, and then if the ace comes, it's clean. Get the ice on the river.
Also polarizing, so we bet a lot of bad hands and a lot of good hands, and ace eight is one of the bad hands also.
Okay, okay.
That's the way I look at it more, and then, yeah, you have to fold out better hands, of course, yeah.
It's thin, but it's a thing.
It's a thing, yeah, but it's mixing, uh, we have a lot of bad hands, I mean. Not only ace eight, it's also jack seven and the jack.
So what are we supposed to do when we blast the turn and then?
Abandon ship.
Oh man, you just go for it all, put it all in the middle.
Damn.
Eh, yes, eight of spades, I would fold, check.
I don't know, I mean, uh, ace three got there.
Yeah, but you block ace three, you could.
I mean, we tried to convince him with the small bet and then a kind of a big bet, and then he's still.
Ace, ace three is still in there.
So, what is this, is this a three bet pot with a small bet and a check and a big bet?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Uh. What ace three is still in there?
I don't know, man, I feel like you probably just, the fact that like, spades, brick, I mean, having the eight of spades is not great, I guess, but it's not too relevant, right? Like, how many eight of spades does he?
Uh, he doesn't have a lot of eight of spades.
I think it's good to have in your hand, because you block the, 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 the miss in his range, I know.
Yeah, 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 I think I would probably pull the bit trigger here.
I would check.
No.
Because of, because of that I have spade, I would check.
Yeah, maybe so. Yeah, okay, well, good game.
Oh.
He actually went for it with king, king, that's pretty, uh.
He's been, he's been calling with kings, queen, flop.
What is this pot? Oh, okay, you're starting, okay, I see what you're working on now.
The turn.
Three bet pots, small bets, turn spot.
Yes, uh, joke myself.
What about?
You can't do anything.
I don't know if we get to go too crazy.
What a barrel sixteen?
I like sixteen. Ay, caramba, I think you probably.
Gets others from king, jack. Oh no, king, jack.
He just, he just put it in, I mean, we don't beat anything, right?
Oh, yeah. Right?
We, are we, hold on, before you click, we're, we're not folding to a bet, right?
Well.
So let's just stick it in.
I mean, you lose to everything.
It's a draw, or you don't get to stick it in with your pair here.
He's got like a million two pairs, and then if he doesn't have two pairs, he's got a straight.
If we're not ever folding, I put it in, if we're gonna fold to a jam, then fine.
No, it's the other way around, Ken, it's, you got it right, we're not gonna fold, we have a, an overpair, but we're not gonna bluff him off.
Now, at least he can bluff, Ken.
Yeah, exactly.
At least he can bluff.
Too bad if you have.
I think we folded.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I fold.
This is the answer I didn't know, if we folding to a bet, then I'm checking, if we're not folding, I'm gonna bet and still try to get called by a king or a queen.
I just don't know what you are hoping to beat here.
Yeah, Ken. Bluffs?
Like, what's, what's, what's this bluff?
I don't care, I don't care. Diamonds, he's gonna have maybe diamonds every blue moon.
This was, this would be a good time for LP to pull up his river call efficiency and show it to the class.
Are you serious? Like, we got fucking aces there, we came with three bet, we see bet, we pop all the way, and now we're facing the finish line, right?
So you're hoping, uh, you're hoping for five, four of diamonds here.
It's time to pass go and collect the two hundred dollars.
We have, we have the second worst possible hand in all of Hold'em, one pair.
Yeah, it's, this is, this is rough, man, I, I.
It's a pair of aces.
He blocked bluffs.
It's aces, come on!
I don't care.
SPR is fifty, fifty here.
Hey, this is, uh, this is only half as bad as Ken wanting to jam Louis on the river, so it's not that bad.
Oh my god, dude.
Oh, never would have guessed.
Oh my god, what are we doing here? Alright, to the turn.
Oh.
Uh, four is connecting with the board, so that's not good for us, but the four is not that bad.
I mean, what does he have, though, Yoss?
Eight, five, in the three bet pot, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I think on these low textures, when, when the turn, there was no good turns here.
I, I think the five is worse for us, the four is maybe okay.
For me, it's very clear now, a low board like this, there's no good turns.
I, you have to check, but. There are some bluffs for this hand.
Fold.
Nope, yep, try again. Try again, I'm not making this call.
Man.
Man, you're a nit.
I am. He had a really, he actually had a really good hand here.
Five, five was worse, with the four is.
Hmm.
I'm surprised he went eight, I would have probably gone bigger.
These impositions.
Uh, well.
Well, we have a nit draw, so.
I kinda wanna go again.
Maybe blocker at least, there's some.
Why?
I'm checking.
To do.
Cause we picked up equity.
Because we fold out better aces.
What better aces are you gonna fold? He has a gut shot with ace eight.
Yeah, but.
He's safe.
I mean.
It is not a, oh, got shot with the.
So if you were to bet again, you would be targeting like his queens and tens, I guess? Which is, seems kinda thin, right? Cause they're gonna have additional equity a lot often. Maybe it is just a check, like.
Oh no, he has a lot of suited hands, so he doesn't have a lot of off suits, uh, queens, does he?
Oh, he should, it's, it's button, it's the button, very small blind, so he will have some relatively high frequency queen X.
No.
It's another barrel.
I think mostly suited. I don't know.
Yeah, see, he's got all of his offsuit ten X in there.
The queen's issue.
That is.
Yeah, but this is just full range, actually.
That's us.
That's us, never mind. Right, so it looks like on the offsuit branch, if you have a, uh, a spade, you're probably continuing, there's a lot of that over there.
So you bet your worst aces, come on.
Even if you don't have a spade, you're still continuing quite a bit.
Continue the sevens, seven spades.
Bet your worst aces, just do it.
Ah, no, you're just actually barreling with the spade in your hand.
So hard to just barrel off sixty bags, man, god.
It's not hard, we have a spade, look at this.
Look, he's all the bet is.
This is something that's gonna happen, this is a, something that I have to work on comfort zone wise.
What size? It's small with the spade, right?
But also, Ken, if you check any bets, what then?
Yeah, it's a lot worse, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's also not comfortable.
So now what? I know what I'm doing.
Is he supposed to have still queens in his hands? Did you bet now?
We bet on the turn because we pick up a spade and it was fun, but now, I mean. What are we gonna do?
About banning ship? I abandon ship because we have a spade.
He's got more queen X than we do.
Yeah.
I would, I would probably, uh, wave the white flag here.
See, we have a bluff here on this row.
You definitely should.
And we didn't lock that nice.
Yeah, so like what, jack X is probably still going for it, like, jack eight, jack seven, are those flushes?
Right.
No, they're not.
Bluffing tens.
Jacks. So I don't even think it's bluffing tens, I think that's two pair going, it's a full house going for value, and then it's a straight blocker.
Yeah, ten, eight's not.
Ten, nine's a pair, ten, nine, ten, eight, that feels like a bluff to me.
Oh, those are, those are, yeah, I was looking at, I was looking at the offsuit, well, you just have the flushes here of those, it looks like.
I am, ah, okay, flushes, gotcha.
So it's either value or, uh, walker. Jack. Or two pair, or.
So jack ten's bluffing a wee bit.
Yeah, but that's, that's a straight walker.
So we're bluffing with every spade, basically.
And if.
On the offsuit part, and on the suited part, it's gonna be flushes. Uh, that's it, right?
No, there was some jack X in there, that's where your bluffs were coming from.
Yeah, but it could be spade in.
Spade.
Look, look at jack X, jack eight, jack eight. So you got a little bit of jack eight, you got a little bit of, what was jack seven?
This jack eight suited, yeah, okay.
Yes.
So it's straight blockers, and also.
Jack sevens.
And then there is nine, right, the nine X and the jack X that break, the worst ones.
Yeah, it looks like you just don't wanna overdo it, right? Like.
So ideally with the spade?
Hmm hmm. Yeah, I feel like ace nine with the ace of spades is just like a really premium bluff here.
Yeah.
Even having, having the nine of spades is a pretty good.
Hmm hmm.
The ball in with the aces.
Now you're all out. Pocket fours, what a savage.
They had the best answer, it's a correct fold.
His bluff.
I like, I think I like sixteen here, what do you think?
Yep.
Are you, you wanna go bigger? I think sixteen, you might value own yourself if you go bigger, it's gonna get goofy on rivers.
Sure. Finally.
Finally.
Hmm, queen six.
Uh, that must be one of our worst hands, so.
If you barrel the flop, you, this three is very inconsequential, so like a lot, you're gonna continue a lot with your trash, I just don't know.
Yeah, fifty, fifty, bet and check.
Why would we double barrel a lot to jump on a three X?
So probably sixty.
Because his backdoor draw stuff, when it runs out rainbow, didn't pick up any equity, it didn't complete anything, so he's gonna have hands like, I don't know, queen nine of hearts, or king.
Exactly, yeah, the way I see it.
Also, we have clips, it's very good.
Two broadways here, we're just screwed.
It's, it's four, five came in.
Does he, he either connect directly, or is that, his range is connected?
Four, five suited, absolutely, he raises four, five suited pre-flop, and calls, calls a three bet with four, five suited?
It's in there for sure, Scotty.
Every time.
It's in there.
Okay.
But, um, I don't know.
We don't.
I'm not necessarily. I'm not necessarily advocating for, uh, barreling this combo, I'm just saying you're gonna have some trashy combos, because the nature of this three, that continue barreling.
I think this combo is a good combo to barrel, actually, because we have clips.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can get better queens, you can get kings to fold, like, I don't think you would go that, well, maybe you would, I don't know, I would probably like go more like eight or something, but.
I think I would check here, let's see if.
Yeah.
But we do unblock as suited continues. So I think our bluffs are gonna be the lower end of our suited connected stuff, and then the stuff that wraps around the ten, the ace, like the Broadway draws and the low shit draws that really aren't draws anymore.
So look at, he's gonna be.
Not so much.
There is some sixteen here, but there's a lot of eight, and then there's a lot of checking, so.
That's the thing, we have some wheel interactions here.
So like, look at nine, seven, nine, eight, nine, seven, nine, eight are still going for it, um.
Is that clubs or?
Yeah, but look at the direct, the gut shot to the, the, the straight, the wheel.
It's picking, uh, it's picking the five and the four a lot, right? Like.
Yeah. Cause it has to.
Very heavy on fives.
What are the nine, ages that?
Look at six, five. Six, five is going bunker.
Well, I mean, you have direct equity to like the super nuts if a four hits.
Yeah. Roll over, roll over like the, uh, nine, eight, that has no equity, and just see which one it is. It's clubs mostly, but it's all of them.
Oh, yeah.
It seems to prefer clubs, like Yoss said.
Yeah.
Well, the clubs make sense, right? Because you're unblocking his continues on the flop.
Yep. It's weird to me that it emits the eight, six, and eight, seven.
Was that?
I guess the nines block some continues somehow. That would have continued on the flop, does that make sense? I guess not.
I just honestly, Ken, I think it's just pulling from the bottom of the deck.
Yeah, but it's not using eight, six, and eight, seven, they're worse than nine, seven, nine, eight, right?
I think there's something with the six, the way the six interacts with, um.
Six, five.
With, uh, the two and the three. It's, I think it just doesn't wanna like, be saturated with six X, cause you're kind of like blocking some of his like, bluffs, or lose continues? Perhaps? I don't know, I'm kinda guessing.
It's also balance, that, just, sometimes it's just balance.
No, it's not, it's not, like honestly, if you wanted to admit that, and just kinda focus on the fives and the fours here, because they block the straight, I think you would be, uh, more than full enough with bluffs, right?
So a hand like king, queen here, is, is.
You have already enough sixes in your range, sir, because you bluff sixes.
We wanna bet a lot of jackets, right?
I think you're just barreling your, the same combos that have the equity on the flop, like you have a gut shot here, so you benefit a lot from folds, kinda stuff. And I think that's the nature of the three, like if you made it like, uh, the three of, I don't know, spades or something, you probably would see lesser frequency from these that don't interact with the flush.
Yeah, you wanna, it would be spades, right?
Yeah, it would, it would start going down that branch.
I don't think, I think we still see a very heavy king, queen.
Yeah, I just think it would, it would start to discriminate a little bit, see, the frequency drops, and now you're discriminating with the spades, pretty exclusively.
The two hands that really.
The two hands that really surprised me here that are betting, I said three, are jacks, queens and kings, that they continue betting some of the time instead of.
They're about the ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that's pretty, uh, pretty interesting to me too.
But they're, they're marginally made against his, against his uh.
In the three bet.
What was the bet size?
I don't know if it's marginal.
What was the bet size?
What do you mean?
Most often blue.
I mean, that the jacks and queens are betting with.
I think they're betting eight or sixteen, it's gonna be one of those two, I would bet eight personally.
Uh, no, they're betting the small, uh, jacks are betting big, jacks are mixing.
That's logical.
We're also looking at the two-tone variant.
And jacks have uh.
That's right.
Uh, need protection a bit, so.
Not the two-tone, but the, the backdoor that can, so now like you see queens is benefiting a little bit more from a larger bet some, but. I mean, the strategy is what it is, right? I guess you see this reverse hierarchy between kings, queens and jacks because jacks can get queens and kings to fold if they're in range.
Yeah, also queen.
I'm never folding.
Uh, that kind of stuff.
Ken is not folding.
Not on the turn.
Give up on the queen six, we need queen five here.
Man, if I got pocket queens and I'm catching some light heavy smoke here on the turn, I'm definitely letting those go, I think.
Well, I might still bet because. It's also.
Check, check.
Better.
Five, six.
Yeah, Scotty's right, I bet we bluff this and I bet we bluff it for a big size.
I am out. He's not folding the ten, does he?
Uh, how big are you going?
Go all in.
I mean, you wanna go all in, really?
No, okay, I'm reaching.
Only zero minus.
No, the size is twenty seven.
I'm reaching. Nine, ten. Spicy, um.
I like that queen.
I kinda think we probably, go ahead, Ken.
I was gonna say, if there wasn't three to a flush, we saw on the queen paired, what do we sized up, um, so, but I don't think we're gonna size up here.
I wouldn't be surprised to see an eight point one here.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised, eight point one.
I mean, uh, protect your uh.
Me, check.
But also checking, yeah, checks good. That's similar EV almost.
Well, now what are you gonna do?
You're gonna call one.
Gonna call one at least and then.
It's, well, it's.
Eight, the ball, but it's fine.
I'm worse than eight, so.
Still making four point five, maybe.
You block bet or you bet check?
You're gonna get, you're gonna isolate yourself versus a queen if you block bet, I kinda like playing check to catch his bluffs.
Oh my god, we blocked that.
Even if that is a block, it's like a value.
Yeah, we're targeting flushes.
I guess we are, yeah.
Is it?
And under pairs.
Is it folding?
You can't, you can't fold to a jam, I don't think.
I am definitely falling to a jam. I don't know what the solver's gonna do, but in real life, I am out.
I don't know, I may, I might.
Both of the queens bet small.
Yeah. That's, I guess that's how you protect your um, your eight X here.
And in tournaments, it's even better, but although this is chippy V soul, so not, not tournament.
So it's like, if the guy ever has a bluff here, ever, ever, you're supposed to like call sometimes, but if he just never has bluffs, just fold. And honestly, like Ken saying, I just don't think they're gonna have a ton of bluffs here, like, are they gonna find the king nine with the king of spades here or something?
I would. I wouldn't.
Oh my goodness, seventeen is a pretty, pretty big.
Okay, well, there you go. You can make your zero EV call.
Definitely, it's my favorite thing to do.
You get to reduce your river call efficiency another notch.
Another notch, a little bit worse every time you call. There we go, look at, shit. The hell always beat me, man.
I mean, honestly, what is their value to bluff ratio there? It's probably like five to one or something, right?
Oh, it's gotta be something ridiculous like that. Man, I kinda wanna barrel this again.
Me too.
Yeah, we have the queen of spades, so that's a good one.
With the spade, right?
Yes, that's one of the driving factors, I think.
Very heavy bet there.
And also blocking uh straights.
When you say, yep, blocking the straights also important, when you say.
Having it's also important.
Pure.
So what I'm noticing too is when there's a lot of draws still available, we value, I guess it's a value bet, second, third pair as well.
No.
What?
It's, it's at ten.
It, it's in between, but uh it's blocking a lot of uh floats.
And seems like we're in the slivers.
Yeah.
Uh, check, pretty easy check, I think.
Check cry.
Check cry, I like that response.
So he's not jamming any kings here, so it's gonna be an ace or better if he jams.
We put them in the box with our line, oh.
Ace better or bluff, we block bluff, so yeah, I guess I'm out.
What value also? But I would fold.
Do you wanna have a spade or no?
I think having a spade's not great.
Not great, but having a queen is not bad.
Honestly, I think this hand's a really good barrel in the turn, but for those reasons, it makes it a horrible bluff catch on the river.
I don't think having a queen is good here, Yoss.
I don't think it is, having a queen's bad, having the queen of spades is particularly bad.
Yeah, you also bluff, like, you need to think about queen nine, queen eight.
Well, may, uh, you can bluff indeed with queens also.
He might actually have some.
He called the three bet with a bunch of suited queens.
He might actually have some ten X bluffs here as well, is he bluff like ten jack?
Hmm, it's a good question, Ken, I think he might.
Ten jack without spades, like the offsuit, jack ten, no spade?
Yeah, like jack ten of, I don't know.
Clubs?
He can't have clubs, I, that was my first knee jerk reaction, it's gotta be offsuit.
Yeah, before we move on from this, I understand why the queen of spades is a bad card in our hand, I'm not sure why the queen is a bad card in our hand since the queen blocks the queen jack.
Look at this, Scotty, it's very clear, queen nine.
Yeah, we block queen nine, but we also block queen jack.
Queen six.
But there are more queen uh six, seven, eight.
So Scotty, I'll, to simplify it, to simplify it, like. You have a clear bluff catcher here, and while you are blocking the absolute nuts, you're also blocking the bluffs that you need him to have to extract EV. So you have Jack still that he can bluff, but half of the combos that. He would be bluffing here, you're blocking, it would be much better to have like ten five or something here than the ten queen, right?
Or ten seven. Be, be, right, because as I look at it, the, the, there's about as much queen jack as there is queen eight, queen nine and queen six added together, it's about the same. But, but blocking the bluff is more important than blocking the nuts because he's got all kinds of non-nut hands he can bet.
Well, it's, it's also the line that we took to get here, right? Like, this is a three bet pot that we see, that we double barreled, polarized the turn. Which is gonna push him into like very specific niches, it's either gonna be value or brick draws at this point, so like for that reason, having the queen of spades is pretty unattractive here.
Yeah, it's worth pointing out, he did bluff some ten X to the ten, nine, ten, eight, ten, seven.
If I made.
I did see.
Ten sevens the nuts, but ten nine.
Okay.
What would you like to say, Yoss?
What I also think is, you also have to look at the value bluff ratio. Because there are less bluffs, uh, blocking bluffs is more important than blocking value.
Yeah. Um, the ten here is not great. But we have like a pretty good hand that benefits from fold equity.
Yeah.
And we also have equity, I still think I would probably play check here.
I'm checking a lot too.
I don't know if that's right, though.
Although we are bluffing spades, I would bet, I think I'd bet more than check.
We don't get a better queen to fold, right?
Just small.
You don't, man, all the better queens have better, they have more equity, right? So queen jack, better queen, king, lots of equity.
But he's got a lot of shit kings and aces now too, he's got like king five suited, king four suited, maybe, king seven suited, king eight suited.
Yeah.
Real aces.
I think we would wanna have one spade in our hand to double barrel here.
I'd rather bet without a spade, I think, because now you're getting the diamonds, clubs, hearts.
We want a spade here, for sure.
Yeah, cause we want, we, we, we want him to not have a continue.
Yeah, we are bluffing.
Yeah.
So blocking continues is uh the best part.
Yeah.
So it looks like queen nine can start barreling small on the turn, but.
Now, look at all the, you're gonna get a lot of king high and a side to fold, all these wheels that are out of, they're just breaking down, all the clubs, diamonds, and hearts are probably out.
It's a very good draw, I mean, that, that's true, also. And you don't win a showdown, so.
I think, I think I still take check here and I, I, I would rather just play a really polar line on the river.
How does it place spades?
Um, it looks like it.
Mixes.
Yeah, yeah, it's mixing them, right? So. Some of them are betting, some of them are checking.
Some are betting small, some are betting big.
The aces and kings do a lot of checking.
Perfectly mixing with spades, great.
That's not what you do, not what I do.
Back to this, we wide bet small. Because it's a pair, a, a card, a, a card that pair, so it's like small.
Well, we still have direct straight equity and I, I repeat it again, we are getting a decent amount of ace and king high to start folding.
Well, you wouldn't bet large here, Ken.
At the eight.
Do you think with that bet small like this here?
You, you're gonna get the ace two through ace five, the king two through king five, ma- and then maybe like the king sevens, ace sevens, kings eight of the world without the.
Get better hands to fold, Ken is right.
Which one is, which one is us and which one is them? This is.
So this is them facing our.
That after a bet.
Or his ace, kings are folding a lot.
Yeah, yeah, he's folding aces, he's folding kings.
And in real life, the population probably isn't raising the ace two, ace three, ace four, ace fives of the world without spades.
In their real life, is population calling your three bet with king four suited?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, and the answer to that, the answer to that is no, and if you say some will, some will also do the exact opposite of what you just said about folding all these combos.
Nah. So it's all related, it's still good, so let's stick with the solver.
I would play, I would play check here, I think.
Solvaris was, it was correct to bet.
No, it's a bet small, we barrel because we get kings high, king irish to fold.
So he just raises with the combo, I said, the population isn't gonna raise this with and we can't do nothing about it, I don't think, without the spade.
You gotta fold, I think, here.
The open ender.
You could be just dead.
Open ended against the pair.
Twenty five, I think it'd be a chance to do the math. It doesn't feel good, honestly, I probably would have folded after though in the math.
Only have to put in sixty more to win eighty, there's one in five.
How did this happen?
Seven clean out.
You just gotta jam it in.
Did we lose most of our chips here? I guess this is. You wanna jam here in an ace?
Green, that, that's good, I think, I'm out.
Where are you going, Ken?
Bad chip.
You have a.
Regroup and grind up by twenty bigs.
If you're calling the turn, man, you gotta have some bluffs here.
Not this, his bluffs, we, we saw that he's bluffing a lot of the real aces too, like the aces in his bluffing range. Like, whatever, I'm out.
Ah, damn, but we got a bunch of aces to fold on the other street, so it's fine.
Yeah, king queen gets there also, yeah, whatever, it's, it's, it's honestly, you're gonna be screwed other way.
It's the sliver you shouldn't find.
Don't think it was gonna fold that.
I'm shutting down here, I think.
Why?
No. Well, so I wanna have some asex in my bet check bet line. But then I like, I reconsider and I think like the deuce.
Break.
It is pretty bricky, I mean, spades do come in, you can still target spades value, maybe a bet small again, I think it's gonna bet eight point one or check.
I think it's bet sixty, I think we saw a similar spot earlier, we don't block the flush and I, I thought we would bet from the top down, but it's still bet like the ace, eight or whatever it was. I think it's a bet because of that.
I think.
I think that's not the best combo to bet if you have clips or uh an offsuit one.
Okay, I would bet there again, because.
Top and bottom bet, middle checks.
I don't think population is, like, we should check here because it's gonna raise sometimes, okay? And when he raises and he takes these aggressive line, we're in a world of hurt, but I don't think population is raising enough here, so we can bet.
Hmm, yeah, doesn't go uh eight point one. Well, what do you do now? Are you just gonna triple it off for our a hundred big blind pot with a naked ace?
Check, check, check.
Check it, check call.
No.
Hey, you can at least uh catch bluffs.
Yep.
What is he gonna do with like uh ace four?
Yeah, okay, one of like the two, the two, one of the two combos, two combos we're looking for, Louis. Yeah, he's gonna check it.
He probably can't fold a jack, queens, if he has them in range, tens probably can't fold, so we could target some balls, but I'm still playing check, I'm still playing check call.
Have to go for that.
Yeah, we gotta bet.
Jacks, what jacks is he calling a triple barrel with?
Maybe some jacks sometimes, every blue moon. He listed his hand, he's like, oh, I have the ball with this jack here, I don't like this spade, blah, 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 oh.
Guys are going crazy.
I hate this.
I think against player pool, it's not done.
Thinking.
How are you so unlucky? I don't get it.
Please, please, please.
They, they're just like boxing every hand.
Slow roll, alright.
Playing perfect GTO here. Perfect GTO, the EV is up to the max and we value on ourselves to the max.
You have to win less than fifty percent of the time, early.
So what you're telling me is you should have checked the turn.
This is going exactly when, just like when I play.
Yep.
Perfect GTO line, and I shoot myself in the foot every.
Yeah, you're, you're playing perfect GTO versus a perfect GTO opponent is the difference.
Check.
Uh, king is pretty good for our three bet range, no?
I got jacks, no spade.
It's also good for a continuation, raise the king of spades.
Does it really matter what we have?
Hmm, do we block bet? Is he gonna, he's gonna bet single spade combos but not flushes?
I would just check this, man, what are we trying to do?
Why?
Turning or turning jacks into a bluff?
Yeah, well.
You might have got that fold, maybe.
I know, not to be a small bet.
Nothing.
No, got a bit big. I know this one.
Uh, this is a pure brick, so you can bet.
Sixteen.
I like sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, I like sixteen.
I'm gonna check here.
No way.
Enjoy your.
Louis, I don't think you've ever checked this node in your entire life, I know you're cheating, I know what the solver's doing.
I haven't, but now.
He's got a window open in the background.
I was wrong.
You guys.
Sixteen is too big and it's.
It's the same pattern we've seen five times now this.
So how about this? Why are we checking here?
Yeah, it's the same thing we saw ten times already today, a low board, when, on a low board like this, we see Betty call, there's no good turn.
Okay, where is our thirty eight point nine nine EV coming from?
But two, three, four are particularly low, that's like a, uh, not a great, like, that's just a low board, it's not great for either of us.
Oh, well, I think I got lucky here because on the other sim we saw. There was no good turns at all.
Because they were a little more middling connected. This is low, low, low.
Maybe our aces are too good to bet.
Yeah, we're betting from the, like, our pairs, the worst pairs up probably.
We can't have less aces to continuous.
Because we're lacking bluffs too, so we're gonna bet our. I guess five, sixes, sevens, nines, tens up.
Uh, the most important thing is the value answer, that is, is bullshit, in my opinion. If you have enough value rounds, then you just have a value bluff ratio.
But yeah, it's been a pattern we saw a lot this morning. Uh, it's a low board, and then. After we see bet and he calls, there was almost always no good turn.
What do we do with pocket five, sixes and sevens?
Yeah, uh, he has all the trips, huh? We don't.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So he has maybe a noted voltage, that's.
This is the turn strategy.
So fives and sixes bet, okay, makes sense, fives, tens.
Five, sixes also have straight draws.
Yes.
I guess the thing is, okay, on like a, a four, three deuce, we're blocking a lot of his continues here, blocking aces, which is not great. Like, he's gonna continue with almost all of his asex. So we have to maybe slow down to get some value from some of these other fans, like bluffs and things?
I think that's a big part of it too. That's why kings are betting so much, probably.
Right, well, yeah, so like kings, kings and queens are kinda going bananas because they're still like, the ace fours, threes, ace jacks.
Value in aces.
Yeah.
But, um.
Aces get less value, so you can't check those, and then kings get more and.
I guess you just have to load him up for like, load him up with some, uh, some bluffs. I mean, like, he's gonna put his money in with nines plus anyways. If you play check, he's gonna, it's not like he's checking back nine, nine.
If you bet, then you raises. If, and you have aces, then, uh, why did I raise?
Yeah, it's interesting, uh, how it goes, you know, more kings, more queens, more jacks, fewer tens.
Mm-hmm.
That's a low, maybe, but it's also depends what.
But then nines jumps up. It's just, I, I don't think it's worth learning. I just thought it was interesting.
Yeah, it's just close.
Yeah, like, I don't wanna look at like a three, four, five and see if it stays the same.
So I guess I'd be curious if like, instead of like a low, low, low board, if it was like low, low middling board, like. Let's say there was a queen or a ten or something, if it would still play aces similarly. If there was like more stuff for him to kind of grasp onto in his range.
But again, yeah, you also have to check some good hands, because you have to protect your checking range, and I think aces are the perfect time to check, uh, most boards.
I would definitely, if it was like queen, four, three, and then a knight came on the door, I would definitely double barrel aces.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what I'm getting at too. And does it care like, they have the heart here also?
Gets value from ace five and that kind of stuff. Because you block them, so I get my kings more than my aces.
Yeah, so like hands like this, like, we never capture any EV from a hand like this with a, a, you know, a bet, bet line, really.
The bet.
This is probably a big bet. I like sixteen here.
Because he's not gonna call the, uh, he, he's not gonna call the turn when it, when his flush comes in?
He blocked the flushes.
I mean.
That seems like the only way we get value, is to bet the turn.
Maybe verse like exactly hearts there.
Yeah, it's just, it's his hand.
His exact hand. I, I guess I'm just trying to think like holistically from the range.
Oh, okay.
I think this is a double barrel.
This is a really good double barrel. Like, there's too many good cards we can bluff on the river.
And I would, I would play king, queen the same.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, this is, this is definitely a good double barrel. I do find these in game very frequently.
Yeah, but, uh, you block all the continuation, so most.
So it looks like king, jacks more popular, probably because we get value from like, you know, his queen ten, king queens, and things like that. We can apply a lot of pressure.
King, jack.
Yeah, ma- I mean, maybe because we get king, queen to fold.
Yeah, I think that's it, Scotty.
King, queen's still betting a lot, she's using a small.
Yeah, 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 exactly, Ken. It's. It's not benefiting from the polarization quite as much.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's our jack x that wanna polarize, apparently.
What is this?
Jonathan, Jeffy will be doing. Turn. Turn play in three bet.
What, what kind of place to advertise this?
All right. So let's finish this one off. Fold, okay. So now we played the first few, the first hour against, with, using the small size on the flop. So now I wanna explore a little bit of that bigger bet on the flop.
So like half pot? Uh, we're, we're a, this is, um, we're entering dangerous waters.
Yes.
And this is the one that you, you don't do very often, right, Louis?
This is the one I do a lot now because.
I also bet to me.
And then, so say for example here, king, jack, ten. If I have a good king, I'm gonna do it for sure. I'm gonna size up. If I have a. Not sure if I would do it with pocket nine, honestly.
I know we are, man. Like, you, you gotta, you gotta play check here. I don't know, man, like.
You think we're big here to give up or what?
King is good for our range.
Yeah, but the spade blocker is.
Terrible for him.
Terrible.
We still have a pair and a gut shot, we can't fold.
Do we just bluff jam it in his face?
No.
A, a gut shot to the low straight.
Oh, one percent. It's just a fold.
It's just a fold.
A lot of folding.
You should ask GTO Wizard to solve, uh, the further the solves. See a lot of one percents. Yet queen, jack.
Okay, okay, I think we might be able to keep going here.
Yeah, you have the age of diamonds.
I, I don't think this is a big bet flop.
Just because of diamonds.
We are protected, our large bets are kind of protected with an eight, like, we will have some eight X here. We have the diamond to protect us, and we still have equity.
How are you gonna bet pocket queens there on this flop, Ken?
More.
Small.
Small?
Why would you go small with queens?
Man, on the flop?
I'm putting gas on the flop with queens.
I'm range betting this flop, probably, close to a range bet, so I'm betting mostly small.
Yet here you are.
Yeah, but you're small, you have better profit from betting bigger than small.
We're here because he didn't filter flops in the aggregate report, like I suggested, so we're gonna get all kinds of flops, we're gonna have slivers with big bets on.
Yeah.
So are you suggesting that this is a sliver big bet type of flop?
Uh, I, uh, well, it must be if we're playing it. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big portion of the tree. I could be wrong, but I think this is more of a range bet, like third pot, type of flop.
Yeah, so look at this here. You see this here? This is what we're dealing with, huh?
Hmm, this isn't the flop LP? We're looking at ace, ten, three.
A lot of low card.
So this is all the boards in the game. Okay, so do you see from here down lower? These are all the nine eye boards, okay? So this is what we're working with here. So you're saying right now that you don't have big bets a lot?
On low boards.
On low boards, but you can see here, it's, it's, it's small bets, you don't have a lot.
So it looks like the big ducks do drop down on the eight and seven highs a bit.
It's still like, you see, it's a big part of.
It's a paired board.
Look at all those sixty big blind jams.
A lot of fair boards that you're gonna bet on.
Yeah, of course, so, but still, uh, most of times more than twenty percent can or not.
Yeah, so yeah, it's a big part of the.
Twenty percent or more.
Big part of the strategy.
Could say, I and ace, I have some boards, they only bet small, but not on low boards.
So we barrel this turn because we have the ace of diamonds, is that right?
I would barrel. What, what it does?
Yeah, but the barrel.
It really.
It's only one.
It really barrels. It really barrels. Um, I don't know, I don't find jams here, if that's what you were gonna ask. I would probably bet, um, small here, just because the SPR is kinda goofy.
Like, what are we talking? What are they supposed to fold?
Everything.
Not that.
You think they're folding pocket sevens, sixes?
Dude, versus jam? What kind of Colin stations are you playing with, Ken?
Me.
Uh, we kinda block everything, man. I kinda wanna small bet here. I don't wanna go too big.
We don't block spades. And gut shots.
Actually, the challenge is, okay, like, we bet, we polarized the flop, so it's gonna push us into a polar turn, I think. I don't, I don't, I don't really think it's gonna go like big, small.
It has that in the game. It got, it'll have, it can have checks and small bets.
Yeah, but not a lot.
Not, not.
It gets a twenty-one here.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I like twenty-one.
Um, he also. Want to charge the, the spades.
All in.
Just go for it.
Yeah, go for it.
I still wanna see what they're folding versus the all-in on that last flop. I'm curious if they fold any pairs. Because I. I'm like, what is this fucking nonsense?
Also, if you have the five of diamonds.
Ken is not a customer.
They are folding nothing better.
No pairs.
No pairs. No pocket pairs.
No pairs of any kind.
Five fours calling.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I don't understand it. And I'm not folding that shit neither.
You don't understand it, but you're also not folding, right?
Well, now, now I clearly see that I'm not too crazy.
Honestly, you're just, we're, we're just reinforcing him.
Against the player pool?
Okay, here's what it is. We're betting for value against the king nine and the ace nine that are calling. That's gotta be what it is.
And that's the shit I'm folding.
Yeah, a diamond draws, a lot of draws, uh, six, five suited, that goes, six, seven, five suited, seven.
Stuff I give up because I'm like, all right, whatever, dude, take.
King six suited is calling sometimes. They are diamond draws.
Have equity against us. It seems insane. All right. Once you see their calling range, it seems crazy.
Yeah, like, I'm looking at this, I'm like, I'm just gonna give up all my jaws and say, all right, dude, you wanted that bad, take it. I'm going with all my made hands.
Against.
We didn't jam our ace queen.
Six, five here.
Hmm, man, I'm putting the, I'm putting the brakes on.
Why?
The definition of.
Well, we, because we hit the five, right?
Yeah.
We hit the five and we bet large on the flop, so it's like, I think it's trouble. I don't know if it's good, though, I don't.
Yeah, you can also hit the five also. It can have five, four, five.
Yeah, no, it's, uh. King on the river.
Uh, I think you just play check again, man. Let's just show it down.
Just chicken.
Oh, wait.
Have to show it down.
You could, you could bluff if you wanted.
You can grief it, all in. Raise it.
Good grief, good, good grief.
He has a five and wants you out of, uh.
Is a better five.
It's six, it's value.
Oh, my gosh, he valued us.
He valued this.
Um, I'm all in here.
Or this is, uh.
It's either gonna be twenty-one or jamming, I think.
Yeah, I agree. You can have a jack, so, yeah, go in, get value. Ah.
It's not going jam unless we're bluffing with some backdoor shenanigans.
All.
All.
Even if we're beat, we have lots of outs.
Has jack ten? Jack ten.
We have outs.
The ten is good, the queen is good, the king is good, night is good.
Twenty-one.
All in. We turned some backdoor shenanigans.
Ooh, this is a, this is a good jam, I think. It may not, okay, I was gonna say the fact, okay, I was, I.
I was like, okay, we have a pair, so maybe it's not.
So, I'm not jamming here, but, um, I do, I, I would bet here. I, I was thinking like the fact that nine, ten is actually there would slow us down a bit, but. I'm pretty surprised it actually just checks full frequency.
It's jamming or checking here?
Does it play? What does it do versus, versus bet, Louis? All right, so like, let's say we play check and then he bets, do we just jam?
I wanna see the flush, the, the hearts first. So we're gathering a lot of hearts, not the name, but almost all of them.
Hmm. Well, I mean, queen eight is special because it's two pair.
Yeah, it's two pair. But is, is the two pair good enough to, uh?
Dude, it's two pair and a flush draw, like, I don't know what else you're hoping for.
All right, what else is wanted to know here?
So coordinated.
Well, so I was saying, if you play check here and you face a bet, do you just play jam?
Ah.
Oh, you can.
I would imagine so.
I would.
I would think so.
Think it's too strong.
Dude, dude, I would play jam there all day. Um, do, okay, this is an interesting node, okay, so.
So first off, let's see.
Didn't bet, so I go all in.
Look at the turn strategy first.
Say bet small, right?
He, let's say he bets small, and then I think you jam. You raise, you don't jam.
Let's all in.
Oh, that is, never mind, it is a jam, sorry. Well, it calls some, it does call some, but.
Yeah.
Jam.
Out of position, you make sure the chips go in.
When we play check, check here, and the, the flush completes for us, I am torn between jamming and playing check. I think I played check here, so I play check here a lot.
I don't think you can.
I'm on the bluff.
I kinda wanna target bluffs a lot here, I think.
I'm all in.
Yeah, just, he's gonna go for, he can go for some thin value, two, two pair combo, straight sets, his last stuff.
So my challenge is, when you play jam here, what are you targeting for calls? Ace, ten?
Well, people, like, your check is relying on the fact that people are gonna bet often enough for ten value, and we know that it's not gonna happen.
Well, so it's, there's two things, okay, so it's like, you're either, there's hands that he's gonna bluff, or there's hands he's just gonna fold to a bet. Like, it, it's targeting value versus targeting bluffs. And yeah, you're right, you do rely on him to bluff, but if he has a hand that he's never winning with or betting anyways, what does it matter? Is kind of the logic.
Think people are doing that?
Well, of course not, but I can tell you one thing, when you bluff jam into, when you jam into them, they're probably over folding what you would see the response as. So I mean, it's like, there's two sides of the coin there. It's either you're targeting bluffs, or you're targeting value that checks the turn, which is like ace, ten?
Ten, nine?
Maybe. Ten, nine doesn't check the turn, though, like, how many ten nines does he have here, Yoss?
Yeah, not a lot. Because block, uh, did we have ten or nine?
Um, we don't have a ten or a nine, but there wasn't a raise, there wasn't a raise on the flop, and it went check, check, turn. Which, you know, it's, okay, it's plausible, like, ten, nine of clubs may play check, check, turn, I guess, or ten, nine of hearts, or.
Ten, nine of hearts. I mean, LP, if you never, ever check strong hands in your games, and you play a shit ton of games, players over and over again, some of them are actually gonna put notes on you that know, that are gonna know when you check rivers on boards like.
This is value.
You're just, yeah, when you bet, it's for your value, when you check, you don't really have it.
Yeah, but uh, I don't even know what I'm gonna do myself, so.
You always go for the value, when the value's there, you don't miss it. And that's a good strategy against most players, but.
Well, looking at this here, this is against our all in, okay? People are supposed to mix folds with like.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, like, you think they're always just calling naked top pairs here without a flush?
That, that's too bad, that's too bad. Okay. Uh, I think people are snapping it off here with more hands and higher frequencies there. But I'm just guessing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you this.
Folding my much top pairs. My shenanigans.
Although, if there is a um.
And also it's a question, how many uh, uh, bad hands they still have on the, on the, on the, on the river?
Well, I can tell you this, I'm making pretty big folds versus dog jam here. Sometimes versus specific opponents.
But I also make a lot of faults on the flop already against the big bet.
I would think, I would think if you're talking about population, I, I would think you have induced by go, with, with the line bet, check, check. You do induce some bluffs.
Well, sure, it's gonna be a very polar response, right? There's gonna be a lot of checking and a lot of betting on this river. That's basically like the two nodes that you're gonna be pushing the ranges into.
The other hand, king is very scary. So I don't know if you induce a lot of bluffs.
It's just one of those things, like, you, you have to ask yourself, like, do you think the guy has enough value in his range to call? Or is he a player that is gonna make big calls to bluff catch?
Uh, all, all, all depends on what he does on the flop also, I mean, you bet big on the.
Well, no, no, eh, we're not gonna add caveats, I'm just saying, given the node that we're in. So like, he called a big bet, we played check, check, turn. So like, if you think he's got like airballs here, or like a jack or something that may bluff.
What I think is that.
A lot of E and checking.
I, I just think that he folds most of his air already on the flop. So he arrives.
Spades?
Pretty good range.
We got spades, you got, you got um.
Of course, spades, yeah.
You got, you got jack ten. You got king ten. I mean, some of those may not go into bluffs at this point, but ace nine, ace nine, maybe?
I'm gonna go, I'm going with the bet. Oh, oh, he could, he bet, this worked, alright.
Right.
We got away with it, this one.
So like, this hand right here, you never get value from if you jam on the river.
Right.
What did he have?
Yeah, he had a nine of, nine, eight of clubs, that's right.
So, you remember, this is, I think, the same spot where it's a low board, we see that, and then we don't have a good turn, so I will go with the check here.
Hmm, I kind of agree, now that, from what we saw earlier.
It's been like that, so like.
Kings are betting, right?
I don't think so.
Oh, kings are definitely betting. From blocking the aces.
We don't care, it's just that there's no good terms. I see, there's a bunch of uh. Actually bet a lot on this one.
Pairs, but the aces particularly, and I think Gail made a key point there, is aces unblocks or continues. Or blocks or continues.
Yeah, but kings are also vulnerable, eh, she tends.
Yeah.
Also vulnerability of uh.
Mm hmm.
They're still the same, you know. Aces are not vulnerable, that's the key.
Check, right? I think you're just blocking the continues. I would check raise this, yes. Oh, wow, okay, maybe not. Maybe we just play call.
Check call. Check call again.
Um, what do you do now? I guess you play check call again?
Play check call again.
You're gonna check back way too much, we got a black bet.
You know, actually, the fact that the six paired, I don't hate block betting some, it's just how many six X do we have in our, in our three bet range, three bet big blast? Actually, I don't think that makes a ton of sense because of the line we took to get here. Actually, I like.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's not a big bet.
We got a black bet, though, cuz he, well, I'll tell you what, this guy might, might bet. Liberally on this river, so we might.
Just have the nuts. Yeah, check.
Right, so it's, it's just targeting bluffs. Here, perfect, now you can, you got a way stronger hit.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just putting it in with queens.
Didn't matter what.
Right.
For value.
And if that guy checks that river back, you just give him a nit tag and move on and never take that check line again. Um, this is a, this is definitely a good barrel. I like, this is a vulnerable pair, we get. I, I would bet here. Like, we get call, we get value from eight, sevens, et cetera.
So when it comes to sizing for value on the turn, it almost always seems to be twenty one.
Right, I guess, yeah, you're just gonna isolate yourself versus better hands if you go.
The rip seems to be very polar.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, this is, eights is in this range, sevens is in this range.
I just tagged the solver of fish.
Um, this is a good double barrel, I think.
Yeah, it's a spade.
We get better.
Why is it, why is it the double barrel? Because tennis spade?
Well, ten of spades and we picked up equity with the queen.
So when we bet with the tennis spade here, do we bluff a spade river?
What tennis space does he have?
I think I would bluff the river. Yeah, man, we got, we got, we got a big polarization advantage here, though, like, we have aces, we have kings, we have ace, king. Like, he doesn't have as much of that in his range as we do.
It's a big, I would just check.
So we're guessing it's a good double barrel.
Yes, I like twenty one.
Ready, Pierre?
Hmm, do we call?
We got seventeen bings behind, I guess we gotta call. No, we don't.
It's gonna be mixing, it's gonna be mixing.
It's like, that was a mistake, let's just.
You guys are crazy, Jack, I really. Look, we three bet, we C bet, we bet that turn, we did everything we could. It's, it, it is what it is, we just pray.
The jig is up.
Pray that this is not Kenneth Capoli, he doesn't show you like pocket books.
Yeah, still then is a good fold.
The ace nine, fine.
It's a good fold.
I love it. So.
We, we, we would check if it, we had pocket aces here.
Yeah, but with the tennis spade.
We'll bet worse tens. Eight tens too good, I think. Yeah, but we already had a ta, uh, spade on the, on the flop, eh, we bet big and he called, so he has less spades, uh. And because we have ten, he has less spades.
Okay, but then. Do we get a better ace to fold after double barreling here? He's Jack. His Jack is queen.
Yeah, no.
It seems, it seems thin, Louis, it seems thin. I kind of like checking.
I mean, it might be, we actually have the.
Your big bad ace king, if I three bet to you, I see but the flop small and I blast this phone.
I actually think.
You're gonna be like, eh.
But it was a bit big, it was a bit big, though.
Yeah.
So. How do you play pocket tens, or?
Uh, I might slow down with pocket tens because of the nature of the board, but.
No, I, I would bet.
We're betting, we're, we're betting tens, we're, we're checking aces, we're betting kings, queens, jacks a little bit, we're betting tens and nines a lot.
Are you afraid of ace five? Cuz here we're blacking it.
So, I think you're gonna bet, like, your ace six is up, so ace six is gonna probably bet a lot, ace seven. Ace ten's gonna probably, ace nine and ace ten will probably start mixing.
You're blocking exactly one combo of ace five.
Okay, just jams.
Yeah.
Or.
The, when we wanna bluff on these shenanigan turns, when we wanna bluff, it seems like it wants to go all in.
You need to go really polar is the answer here, like, if you think you might check, you can probably play jam also. With these, this region of hands.
See range.
Let's look, let's look at that range.
It's also draw heavy board, eh, so yeah.
Alright.
He continued, so he has hearts or spades. Or it connects with that, or yes.
This is their range, right? This is their range, no, because they. So we don't even have ace nine, ace ten suited.
That's, that's always.
So, ace seven, ace eight, ace, ace ten started mixing, that's what I thought, that's what I said, right? Ace ten will probably start mixing.
I think that's what you had declared, Ken.
Yeah, so. Feel good about.
Now, look at the suits here.
I thought ace six would bet almost full frequency and it mostly.
You don't want to.
Right, so if you wanna go bananas, actually, it doesn't even matter, because clubs and diamonds are still going bananas.
And the ace of spades didn't do it every time. It did never with one suit, kicker suit and not the other one.
They get more false.
I'm just curious why ace six doesn't wanna bet, I guess it's, I don't understand that one.
Sure?
I'm not sure why ace six isn't betting here. To me, that's a slam dunk.
Too much equity.
Yeah, too much equity in this case. Don't have the clips and the diamonds, maybe, I don't know.
King six, though. Ace six and ace seven are the same hand there, though. Queen six really likes it. Fifty four, oh, no, no, they're not. The six can make the spade.
Sometimes it's hard to follow, dude, it's just. Let's check some hands.
I want to check call.
Yeah, medium strength, and so I would check. And we have spades, it's bad, so.
Yep.
Club's good, but the spade's bad.
Yep. Call.
Yes.
At least. Like, this is like, what is this?
An easy call?
Yeah. Yeah, you have pure acted call, almost, I mean.
Now, it's not so fun anymore.
Can we block bet even though I'm the sports?
I don't think so.
Oh, we gotta check, check.
We got super lucky, he could have blasted us off here so easily.
We're lucky that he had a queen. If he didn't have a queen, he was gonna blast us off.
Yeah, he had a showdown value, man.
Yeah.
Honestly, Louis, this looks like one that might just jam and, or check, like, the combos we were looking at. I think we gotta jam or check here.
I'm fine jamming.
You get faults from uh, spades.
Hey, you're making a mistake here.
You think?
Think again, yeah.
Uh, it's showdown value, so I check.
What, what do you wanna do? You wanna bet like twenty one or something?
Look at the nature of the board.
Yeah, it's very, 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 very dynamic, which makes me wanna check or jam.
You need a heart or a spade.
I think also that you.
I'm thinking if we jam, they could call with worse if they have those.
I think it's a great double barrel, but we need a heart.
What are you gonna do then?
Check.
Check. No, barrel, one percent.
Oh, man, see, we did that thing where, you know, you, you, you make a absolute statement about something and it just like pie in your face.
Nope, you didn't say what should we do, you said what do you wanna do? And I was honest.
Well, no, well, no, 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 see, he said, he said, see, you're making a mistake here.
Oh. Alright, let's look at that, go, go to the ace king, I wanna look at. Ace king off. Alright.
We, actually, you look at that, look at that, Louis, it's the exact opposite. If you have the spade and the heart, you slow down and you check. It's like Ken was saying.
No, that's, it's, look at the difference in ace of hearts, king of spades and ace of spades, king of hearts, the answer is we.
How many of those hands do you have, actually? That's also.
Actually, okay, so it's, it's like a function of the ace of spades particularly here, all the ace spades.
Diamonds does it.
I know, it's weird, the patterns are weird.
You did bet big, so.
You don't, there's, there's no heuristic.
All of the ace of spades, that's check, they all check or like, like, look, what ace of spades is not?
Okay, all the ace of spades have some checking, yes.
Wow.
Majority checking.
Look at this double flush draw board, usually, do you not need a card of the suit to bet here and a, a eye of suit combo?
I would say, like, it just means it's super polar, so like.
In general, we would do it, right? If you have just one, one of them, it would, it would be like a green line.
Can you look at the proportions in your range?
I think that's with higher. Go, go and do that.
I think it's also like what you're, what Ken's saying, like, we've pushed ourselves into a branch of the tree that's a little bit different when we take a big bet strategy here.
Then you look at the range.
Look at the ace king with, and size proportional. And then let's look, look at the suits.
What do you mean with size?
Click on, click on the ace king offsuit.
Race, this year, we only have slavers of ace king.
And click, click right on the ace king offsuit now, and we'll see what it, what it does with, why, why it does this, it's cuz we never have it.
You never have one.
Right, so we're kind of in a weird branch of the tree cuz we took a big bet on the flop. I guess that's what it's saying.
Yeah. It's very hard to say, uh.
Any blocks are ten.
King four.
Yeah, see, here I kind of wanna check, we're bet small. I'm checking.
All in. You're blocking, uh.
There's straights here, flushes, lots of two pair combos, I'm checking, can't give them up.
And nine gets there, not good for us.
Uh, yeah, this is, this seems like a really easy check.
Ooh.
I mean, what are we gonna do?
Goes for a thin bluff.
Do everything, eh, it's a very dangerous card, so you can bet bit small.
Feels like a waste of fifteen big blinds to me.
On this uh. Red board.
I mean, Ken, you could have made it a waste of an entire buy-in if you wanted.
What, what are you? King of spades, maybe LP, but I doubt.
Louis, come on.
Ah, kidding. Just kidding us. As I said. Ace, Jack, a top pair, man, we have top pair. Can't fold.
Twenty one seems good.
Ooh, all in, just go for it.
Also, this is the first time that I see the all in for a value.
It's a pretty dangerous board, I mean, you have the best.
Yeah. It's got a lot to call, a lot of worse can continue, I guess.
Yeah, a lot of ten.
Yeah, that seems to make, I guess we unblock all his draws, all the flush draws, all the straight draws there.
But still, uh, our range was a bit big, not, uh, I don't know, yeah, this hat.
You guys jamming his queen here?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, it's like, of course.
Have got.
Ace queen?
Two overs in a gutter, direct over.
Honestly, ace queen, ace queen is a pretty good bluff here. If I have ace queen with one spade, I do find that jam.
Yeah, ace queen's better than ace king, you got the direct angler.
Yeah, you blocked the nuts.
Ace queen's way better than ace king.
Any queen can jam you, honey, you block the nuts, man.
Okay.
Not that I find those, but uh.
I would put the brakes on pretty hard here, I think.
What ace does he continue with? That's the question, you know?
Diamond.
It's tough, right? Like, we should be folding out a lot of his ace X on the flop because we took such a big bet.
So we can bet small, maybe even.
I'm checking, I think.
I would bet then. I think he's got a lot of aces here still, honestly.
Eh, not that bad, betting ten.
Thing is, we have the diamond. And then the ace is kind of good for a range, and like Galen said, he folds his aces on the flop.
He ain't folding that many aces, go look at the range, he's got a lot of connectivity with like all the suited aces.
Must be folding a few of them, right?
He's gonna raise some and he's gonna call. And he's gonna have some folds, but not many, I don't think.
You should look at the diamond also to see if it's the driving factor with the bet. Like, does it check more with pocket tens otherwise?
That's a few folds there. But like Ken said, good interaction with this section. What did you say?
I was saying pocket tens, like, do we play check if we don't have a diamond?
We just never have pocket tens here.
This is the bottom range.
Oh, okay.
So like.
Yeah, I'm sure to say the ten is the driving factor, the diamond.
Actually, the diamond actually is the reverse. So like, if you have a diamond, you're slowing down, but pocket tens is just kind of going.
Yeah, if you if he has a ten of diamond, we have another diamond.
Well, I think it's just how it interacts with the rest of the range. Like, look at ace ten, king ten, queen ten, jack ten, like all of these other tens are betting. So like, pocket tens is kind of just matching.
Does not like diamonds.
And against flush draws, you want to get value with your tens.
You know, if you have king jack off with with king jack off, you definitely won the diamond, right? So king ten off.
I would say, I would say.
Going for values, or you need to want to.
What's the problem, Kenneth Kepel?
So you're right, we are betting the jack ten, queen ten, king ten, ace ten. So we're that's why we're betting tens. But the problem, my problem is, I'm not betting jack ten, queen ten, king ten.
Well.
I don't find them. I don't see how they're betting here. Like, I don't see them. I don't find.
I bet tens here. I don't bet.
Bet when you have a diamond in your hand.
Yeah, that's the I I think that's what it is, right? Because you're blocking ace ten, you're blocking queen ten, you're blocking flush draws. There's just a lot that we can continue blasting on the river, I think.
All then nine will call. So we get still value. And also, he has a lot of draws we get value from betting with ten.
So this is a good spot where we have to be aware that we're setting up a river bluff when we bet diamonds on the turn. I'm not good at this. Isn't a thing I give much thought to, honestly, in game. It's probably a big leak.
Yeah, but you probably do it with uh if you have the ace of diamonds and a queen king of diamonds, then you know it. Don't you?
Well, I'm not good at thinking ahead in this spot, like setting up bluffs with a naked dime, like just a single diamond when it hits. It's something I don't really consider in game. Peter talks about it a lot, honestly, in our sessions here. But it's not something I've actually really looked at much at all or thought about. And I don't really ever think about it in game, to be completely honest.
Yeah, I I look at the nut, the diamond draw, the king of diamonds in this case, the king of diamonds will do the last.
Any high diamond is good.
Yeah, of course, but I mean, I just.
You don't need to be that picky, yeah, because you're just bluffing.
Yeah, I know. It's also yeah, blocking his draws, his good ones.
So what size did we say we were going? So we said with a diamond, it's a check.
It went medium, right?
Without a diamond, it's bet big.
Yeah, the blue, one of the blue colors it was.
Oh, medium.
No, it's blue.
I have blue. Okay. I would bet medium, actually, but yeah.
Well, blue is medium anyway.
So now we give up, right? Because what diamond didn't come in? Is that the is that the heuristic?
No, 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 no.
Uh, Ken, here on the turn, the diamond was not good. It was slowing down. So it's not like diamond comes in, we're gonna pick up the actions. Follow me.
See, I'm confused. I thought we were betting diamonds. So when a diamond hits the river, we bluff, we have bluffs.
We are, but not with bucket ten. If you have king jack off.
Ah, right, 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 right.
Value, eh? Right. You have medium value. If the king of diamonds, yes, if diamond comes or a queen of diamonds.
So we just check here?
Yeah, check, check call probably.
We're gonna check, check on the turn, so we have a good second pair.
So are we using the block bet size when we have king ten of diamonds here? Is that our bluff size?
Yeah, uh, king ten of diamond will.
King of diamond ten X.
On a diamond board.
On a diamond five.
No, I don't know. Bet on a diamond five?
I would stuff it.
Yeah, block betting.
Let's just look to see what queen of diamonds ten does. And if a diamond comes in, I'm just curious if we match our bet size there with the tens. If we just bluff small or if we grief it.
I don't know if you have block.
Now we're betting small.
Yeah, but I ask you go from the turn where we bet every diamond, so. Turn with better diamond, right?
Okay, we got a bet. Oh, I got you.
Then he calls, then five of diamond on the river.
Is there still small betting? That's the question.
Small. So eight point five.
Yes, half pot of pot.
I don't know. It's mixing both.
All in.
I can't.
Mostly all in.
I can't distinguish those colors in the range.
Check or all in?
Those colors look exactly the same. I can't really distinguish them, but it's mostly all in, it looks like, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's uh almost fifty five percent all in and uh only twelve percent eight point five, so just uh.
And then what are tens doing here? If we bet turn, looks like they're doing the same thing to some degree. Very, very.
Yeah, slivers.
No diamonds. It's confusing.
Eh, not confusion, why?
No.
And on the five, we're checking.
It's a completely different river, eh? That's different.
We don't get jammed on.
Good.
Different boards, different things. Different action even, sorry, it's a completely different situation.
Give up.
Do we have anything?
Probably mixes. It's one of our worst aces. It's one of our worst offsuit aces. I think we have a seven off.
This six five, so maybe you bluff this one? Because it's the worst age.
I think we can flip a coin here. Heads.
Uh, say we double barrel. Because we get better aces.
Yeah, our worst offsuit aces are ace seven and ace eight. So I I think I I just don't think they're mixing, though.
Arts and.
Double barrel seems good.
Yeah. Arts and spades.
Mostly bets.
And we do the same with ace seven.
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's just slivers.
Yeah, that's the problem with this line, eh? It's slivers already. At least sometimes it's just sliver already. But that's what Ken said also.
What? Shenanigans.
Value.
Twenty one.
Yeah.
Blackjack.
I just.
GG. Oh, wow.
Yeah, get him. I have to bet for value, eh? Come on.
I'm checking.
What? We improve.
We improve.
This is like a, this is a check. Not in my wildest dreams, am I betting in this spot?
We're capped. I gotta call. I capped my ass. I gotta call.
What are you doing, Ken? So three bet pop, we trim the tree free flop, we trim the tree on the flop.
Here's what I'm thinking. I capped my range. I don't have a spade. He and he's trying to run me over. I ain't having it.
What? You three bet him, he calls. You see bet, he calls.
It's my, it's a problem.
Louis, Louis, there's egos at play here. You don't understand.
You need to wake up here. Alarm bells. It's gonna hurt. Pain is coming.
Let go of your ego.
You know what they say, right? With the deuces.
Deuce is always loose.
They never lose.
That's because you never play them.
I I don't know about that. I don't know.
Um, I like a big, a big, a big bet here.
Twenty one.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, twenty one.
Only dipson check.
Call.
Happy days.
Happy, happy days.
Good.
Twenty one.
Alright, sure.
Want to get some chips back?
We have the best green, so go.
Eighty three you're making. There's not a reality I'm ever.
Yeah, even uh. Against the play pool, I would call this one. I mean, yeah. Can you do?
Um, I think we're gonna give value owned here a lot, but twenty one is gonna be the answer.
Twenty one.
I agree. I would also bet the twenty one. Josh's spade draws.
Yeah, twenty one.
Oh, good. There were there. I was looking for a check. There were a lot of checks.
Jam. Whatever. Value owned. Um, so the six is kind of a blank here.
Offsuit.
This might bet small, but it's gonna be checking and betting small if it does bet small.
Twenty one.
I'm guessing we check and we bet the offsuit.
Check.
Check and bet small.
So does king ten bet?
Uh, king ten would be an attractive combo, more attractive than the the king queen for sure.
King ten is a lot better.
I don't understand. I just think they're all the same. To me, they're all the same hand. I'm gonna bet them all. It's obviously a mistake.
Yeah, Ken, Ken, like you have, there's thirty two combos. There's thirty two combos that king ten can target. That king queen can't.
Right.
And like, it's it's, I mean, that's significant, right? Like, it's not.
It's like, it's your best showdown hand because uh ASI is top pair.
That's a simple way to think of it. Yeah, it can't, king queen does, king ten might get king jack and king queen to fold and king queen.
Exactly.
Beats them on the river. If you guys, if you're up against them.
Right. Mm hmm. Alright, so do we continue? Like spades, brick. We're kind of blocking the continues with the king and the queen. I think we just show it down because we beat all the brick spades anyways. They don't have pairs.
Yeah, if we, if we get to show it down, we can win sometimes.
Yes, not very often, not very often, but sometimes.
If we check the turn because it's our best hand, king high hand, then I guess we check river, right?
I I bet you would bet, you would probably bluff king ten here.
A little bit, right?
A little bit. It's not gonna be like amazing, but some.
You want to see? Do you want to see if you bet the king ten?